Upon arrival, I was further identified and deployed into this all-important committee on basic education. And my home is in Limpopo. Tsanin is my town. Thank you very much.
He forgot to say he was a principal for thirty-eight years. How many months?
Thirty-eight years, a teacher. Ubbaba Chris knows better. Thirty years, five months, three weeks, a principal of a high school. Thank you.
So we've got a principal here. Whatever you say, you need as a petumlungu. Open space. So you've got an understanding now who is here. And these are the members of the Committee on Basic Education. At this point, I'm going to ask a DBE. This bill... Yes, I believe in funders, so I go here too. So get siaba facilitator like Ubbaba Mabakwazi, who passes a lot of it, to pass away by Parliament. So DBE is going to give us the aims and objectives of Bella Bill. This is Bella Bill. It's basic education laws amendment. Nothing else. It is not a sex bill. It is not an abortion bill. It is Bella Bill. And when you are done, Babunlebe, I'm going to hand over to the principal to chair the session of today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee, members of the Portfolio Committee, officials of the department from national and also from the provincial. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. My name is James Nlebe. I'm the chief director from the Department of Basic Education. This is the department that has made those amendments. And we requested Parliament for approval and permission that they be made law. As you know, the department cannot promulgate law, but it's Parliament that can do that. The reason why there has been changes that we requesting that they be considered is that the South African Schools Act has been passed from 1986. And since 1986, there have been a lot of development in the country. There's also been a lot of changes that requires that we go back and relook at the Sasa is still responsive to the needs of the country. We then picked up about fifty-six different challenges that we thought really need amendments. And these are the sixty, fifty-six clauses that you have in your hand as you came in, they gave you the Bella Bill. I want to go through some of the changes that we are recommending. One of the changes that we are recommending is to look at what we call the code of conduct of learners. Through our monitoring, we believe that the code of conduct need attention because some code of conduct are not in line with the laws of the country, especially the constitution. There are still code of conduct that are still discriminatory in nature, especially when it looks at examples like dress code and the hair, specifically of a black child, that it then get included in inside a code of conduct and make it illegal for certain issues. Then we're saying code of conduct of learners need to be aligned to cultural differences, diversities, and the different people that are in the South, that live in South Africa. We also are saying the code of conduct of learners needs to include issues such as serious misconduct and minor misconduct that will allow us to deal with issues of bullying in schools, violence in schools, where we really define what serious misconduct is in order to advise school governing bodies and SMTs when they handle such issues of suspensions and expulsions of learners. So the code of conduct is one of those serious things that replace inside the Bella Bill. At the moment, Sasa does allow the MEC to close and merge schools that are small and non-viable. But our observation is that this is not correctly done. There are steps that provincial departments and districts skip when they deal with a major enclosure of schools. So we want to make it a law that we put those steps inside the Bella Bill so that they become an act, especially issues around consultation with communities and all stakeholders that are involved. So the Bella Bill is focusing on the major enclosure of schools, but basically the correct steps to be followed when that is done. The Bella Bill also look at issues of finances in schools. Finances are the responsibility of the school governing bodies. But as it is, school governing bodies only report about finances at the end of a financial year, not a schooling year. But no reports whatsoever during the year. In the Bella Bill, we want to put a clause that says we request SGBs to report about financial issues to the department on a quarterly basis so that if there are issues around mismanagement of finances, we able to pick them as early as possible and intervene where possible. So it's a change of annual to quarterly. And don't get us wrong, we're not saying audited financial statements on a quarterly basis. We're not saying that. Audited financial statement once a year, but financial records like expenditures on a quarterly basis. And we're also saying to school governing bodies, when you go to parents during annual general meetings and asking parents to vote for the budget, be transparent, tell them everything that you paying for, including how you pay teachers the extra salaries, they need to be declared in advance so that parents can make informed decisions whether they vote for your budget or not. So see, these are some of the changes that are in there. We're looking at the Bella Bill to rectify the changes or the challenges that we see during monitoring, especially when you deal with admissions of learners in schools, that there are obstacles when you deal with admissions of learners because the policies are determined by SGBs. But at the moment, when SGBs determine those policies, they become a law unto themselves and there's nobody that can intervene in that regard. We want to put a clause that says should a policy deviate from the norm, deviate from the constitution of the country, there must be somebody who intervene on behalf of government, and that is the HOD that can determine whether the admission policy is in line with the constitution of the country. That admission also goes with the determination of a language policy because we are pushing for home language. We pushing for mother tongue instruction. But the policy that are determined by SGBs may not allow us to achieve that unless we put a clause that the HOD need to intervene should some languages be marginalized and children are not admitted in schools on the basis of language. And those are proposals that we making. We're making a proposal that those who feel they are not comfortable in sending their children to public schools or even independent schools, they can continue to educate their children at home in what you call homeschooling. But we're requesting those who want to homeschool their children, register, they need to inform the department about what they are doing at home in terms of indicating the curriculum that they are offering. We're not prescriptive. We're not saying they should do caps. We're not telling them what curriculum they want. But all we asking for is that the curriculum must be an internationally recognized curriculum that they are offering and then they can continue. So as they do homeschooling, we're requesting that homeschoolers need to get an independent assessor that can verify and confirm that indeed the child is receiving education at home. That's all that we requesting for. But homeschooling can continue as much as parents want. We also looking at the issues of learner pregnancy that our laws allow children to continue attending classes even when they are pregnant, but it ends up there. So we want to request that the minister be given an authority to go further in coming up with regulations that will inform teachers on how to treat those pregnant learners. These regulations are going to include how teachers should manage a pregnant girl, how exams are managed by children that are pregnant, if they miss test, what happens? How do you even report issues of pregnant girls? Because pregnancy can come in the form of a learner impregnated by another learner, a learner impregnated by a member of community who's an adult, a learner impregnated by a teacher. How should an SMT report such cases to the police, to the Department of Social Development? But all this is done in the form of how do we really support a pregnant girl in class and at school? How do you bring in parents? Because they need to play a role as well as the child is attending classes because the aim is to make sure that there's no disruption of that learner as they attend schooling because of pregnancy. So those are what the regulations are going to look into. We also are looking at regulating the sale of alcohol as a form of fundraising in schools. We're saying this is happening. It is being done in certain schools. But there are no regulations on how the school needs to apply, how do they get permission in order to do that if they've got these big sporting functions and cultural activities and so on. So we putting that and say should a school feel they want to do that, there must be steps to guide them and not opening up shape beans in every school. So Chairperson, I thought those are the bone of contention. And the most important one is that of the inclusion of grade R in our schooling system because it has not been part of our schooling system. Hence, parents were funding it themselves. So we want to put it in the schooling system so that the department funds grade R and pay for the teachers in grade R and put resources for grade R learners in a school situation and at least remove the grade Rs from their homes and they become part and parcel of the schooling. Chairperson, thank you very much.
Colleagues and everybody in attendance, thank you very much, Ndaye Nlebe, for indeed having to unpack the bill because you are basically the custodian of this whole bill. Ours as parliamentarians is to facilitate the process based on the whole principle of our country offer, not only be having a constitutional democracy, but also having a participatory democracy wherein the people must add their views on any change in as far as the acts within the constitution are concerned in case they have to be amended. Let me take this opportunity right away to say to the Chair of the Portfolio Committee, thank you for the trust and confidence that you have put in me. In principle, the law says you must chair. Wherever we go, you must chair. It is only at your mercy that you can hand over this baton and it does not come cheap. We are going to start. We have got a maximum of four hours wherein we should have wrapped up this process. And we want to plead for your cooperation and maximum cooperation for that matter. But first and foremost, let us start with the ground rules. My Bible says, how can the two walk together unless they have so agreed? Amen if you agree with me. The starting point for everything is that the two people, if they want to walk together, they must first agree. Even in the family, how can you make a family unless you have started by agreeing the two of you? Number one, we are going to call you one by one. I will decide if I start on my right or if I'm going to start on my left. In a group of fifteen, I'm so reliably informed by my chair that we have got fifteen chairs. Thank you. I'll identify fifteen from my right as a starting point. And thereafter, after the fifteen shall have run their race. I'll go to my left, identify the other group of fifteen. And this time around, there is going to be an instruction from below. The Chairperson, because now already I'm having the mic in my hands, that simply tells that I'm in charge. Second to none, I'm going to appoint the Chair of the Portfolio Committee, who is now not the Chair here because I have taken over, to keep my time. She's going to be my time keeper. It's a very prestigious position, time keeper. She will keep the time. When you are three minutes has lapsed, I'll rise up and say your time is over. And please don't fight with me because you will not win that battle. The sitting as we are, it's important that you must also know that it's a parliamentary session underway. All the parliamentary rules are going to be applicable. The parliamentary decorum will apply. If you get out of track, they might not have introduced themselves. We have got parliamentary security personnel in our midst. We don't want to call them to assist you go out because you shall be disrupting the process. But I want to say everybody must respect the parliamentary rules which will be underway going through from the beginning. The other point is on interpretation. Let me just briefly indicate that. Lapesivela kona, this has been the trend of what we are doing. We were interpreting only for people who were talking in vernacular. We cannot have the same level of education here. There are people who want to talk, but they may not be able to talk because they will hear you talking a lot of English. If there are people who want to talk Korsa, Honorable Nodada, they are going to be allowed and we are going to seek interpretation after they shall have spoken. And that will also be done in case there will be people talking Afrikaans. And I believe those are the only extreme languages which may be spoken in here. But those who will be presenting in English, there will be no interpretation. Number four, your time limit is three minutes. I've just said so. Number five, after the full run or during the course of the run of these people giving their views, there are people who feel, hey, the stage is too heavy for them. And we have arranged for a makeshift arrangement. There is a lady with an Afro hair on my extreme right. She is having what we call the forms. You can just approach her. She will assist you in as far as completion of those written submissions are concerned. But basically, I must indicate colleagues that the written submission process has come and gone. But we have agreed as the Portfolio Committee that wherever we visit, because we may not be able to exhaust the total number of people in attendance, let us give those people an opportunity also to submit what we call written submissions. But one thing you must know, you can't complete the form on written submission, but also come and talk English here. You must choose between the two. You don't have to duplicate yourself. Those who complete written submission, they don't come and talk here. I hope that matter is very clear. And those who talk here should not thereafter go back and say we want to also come. That is what we call daylight robbery and we will not allow that. Colleagues, I think I've said it all save to say, in the interest of time, I'm starting with the recognition. Could there be any... No, no. It appears I've covered it now. I see the bottom of the eye of Honorable Nodada. I have something for the... What? Oh, no, no. Thank you very much. You see, I am in different committees in Parliament. But I can confirm and confess, I have never seen a cooperative committee like this one. The day they say you must get out of the Portfolio Committee on Basic Education, I'm lobbing you to come so that we make a strike in Parliament that it does not happen. So colleagues, Honorable Nodada is advising me. Upon arrival here at that mic, you rise up and introduce yourself. And in the process of introducing yourself, you must equally indicate if you support this bill or you do not support this bill. We are trying to urge our people not to come here and talk in terms these languages of saying partial, I partially support. I icon, that is unnecessary. Come here and tell us if you support the bill or if you do not support the bill. After introducing, okay, let me try to give an example. My name is Ronnie. I am from blah, 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 blah. I rise here and want to indicate my position that I support the bill. Then you can start other things. Why are you supporting? If you don't want to tell us why you are supporting, it's as good as good and enough for having said you support. This is a public participation platform. Thank you. I'm starting on my right, to the right, to the right, to the right. Mele Yelu, you are number one. I have called the Mele Yelu. This is the confusion I always don't want. Very quick. Okay, he's number one. Did you go there so that you want to speak? You are number two. You are number three. Number four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Did I point you, Baba? Thirteen. I don't have a part of thirteen. Fourteen, fifteen. Please. Please. You rise up silently because I'm going to allow the first speaker to start speaking. You are fifteen. I've identified you, Finito and Clark. Eh 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 eh, Mtaata. Mtaata, no way. Silent move. Mele Yelu, the stage is yours.
My name is Jawu Apani. They recently ordered uncontested elected Secretary General of Congress of South African School Governing Bodies in South Africa. And I've been mandated by Eastern Cape COSA SGB to support this bill million times. But what I've also been mandated by my association is that I should pay honor to this province because this province is a province of legends. We all know that South Africa is what it is because of this province. I don't want to say names. It is all because of this province. And also, I have been dancing with Satu. I could not hear their songs because of the way they sing the language. But we were together. I could feel the spirit. They are our stakeholders. Mr. Nlebe articulated all that is in the bill. We all know that section five and six seeks to address the injustices of the past. We gave the SGBs the power to come up with laws or policies. But whites abused those policies to discriminate against us blacks. But now the HOD is going to intervene. And also, we thank you, all the parliamentarians, that we came up with section thirty-seven, that which Miss Siker doesn't want us to believe that we are against section thirty-seven. We are for section thirty-seven, but we want the HOD to intervene to know what is happening there at the farms because we are suspicious that they are teaching racism there. We know that all whites, we've got an intelligence that all whites and all blacks that thinks that they are white. There are blacks who thinks that they are white. They are going to be against the bill. We know them.
Unfortunately, Mr. Apan, your time is up. Next. Next.
Honorable Chairperson, Sbulisengokelisonke Eskona. Magendinbulisenge Kamalkaya Sukresumsensuetu, amen. Lautetayongumpostile uasafuzile o tuñasus student Christian Organization apa Eastern Cape Student Christian Organization. Nditunyake okokba ndizotugle bili proposayo dibenezinto enye ndi kasaayo. Lena eti ugrade R magbe kombazar eskolwin. Kukolena elapa eti uchoala ma buvumelek e butengi swae tawukonai okeshin. Leo, sis student Christian Organization ndi kasi. Koba siti tasta tange moto yagwa education. A school is a school of teaching and the learning. Mbozo endu samupagamisa ma Africa. Ngoti injongo yokutengi swa kuchuala pagati wabantuana. Nogokba umte tuyo busiti outengi seloa onga panzi. Umtaana uyobufunda ntonina. Zemkinga inkomo ma kwalandi. Sisama ukupagamisa indo eti sis student Christian Organization asi kasi londo okokebe la ndikela panzi indo eti is school governing body eslalayo eskolwin. Ngokoba beketiwe sikhalela okokba sis student Christian Organization nokoba ngati swae ngokuwa kualigno ngi policies ka edukation. They are asking for a policy, education. They are asking for a policy, to help them. They are asking for a policy, to help them. They are asking for a policy, to help them. Since they are asking for a policy, to help them. They are asking for a policy, to help them. Since they are asking for a better place, they are asking for a better place. They are asking for a better place, to help them. They are asking for a better place, to help them.
Thank you, next. Oh, by the by, it was too much of a COSA speaking. Can we have an interpreter? I'm sorry, Baba. I'm sorry, Baba. Can you lower the mic? Thank you.
I am Asafuzile. I greet everybody in the name of Christ. I represent a students organization. I do support the bill. I also further support the issue of the great R that has been raised. Allow me also to stress that the selling of liquor at schools, I do not support it. School governing bodies should be assisted with education policies. Nominated persons, persons who are clear, who knows about the policies and who are properly educated should also be given the opportunity or their services should also be used. I support the bill.
Thank you very much, interpreter, next.
You program director, I am M. N'Gwadwa, the member of the SGB in Bolota in Gwenzee. Chair, let me just appreciate this initiative by the members of parliament to come to us in order to get our, our view on this bill. But chair, before I support or not to support the bill, my view and my understanding in this regard is this that you have held all the way from parliament to look to our honest views coming down here. But I don't understand it, and I'm not too sure, but I'll rely on you, Chaperson. If it so happens that just before you arrive here, there are pamphlets who are already moving around, trying by all means to influence our view. Is that correct, Chaperson? It has come to our understanding that there is an MP who's currently distributing the pamphlets as, as, as to see this government as, as, as the one who's promoting abortion and the one who are promoting the liquor in our schools. You see, you find it difficult. It is very influencing to all the people just in advance. And that MP has got a name here. We have happened to intercept those, those pamphlets. They were written by somebody who has called herself Sukers from the ACTP MP. It has been written like that. I then therefore, Chaperson, request your indulgence in terms of saying that before we move forward with this progress, I'm not trying to hold a ransom this process, but can we be pleased if that particular person is known to you by the name of Sukers, can she be excused in this organization, in this issue? My fear is this that you will go back to parliament, getting a wrong impression that you got the honest ideas, whereas some of you as parliamentarians are not afraid to distribute around here. The pamphlets were already inciting and influencing the whole people to take a certain tune. I then therefore, Chaperson, again, request your indulgence in this regard. If you know of such a person by the name of Sukers, an ACTP MP, as she has written in that pamphlet, can you please adjudicate on that before we move forward? Thank you very much, Chaperson.
Thank you, thank you. We are going to need an interpreter, msné. Can we have an interpreter? There was a lot, okay, thank you. I am cordially informed that there was a lot of English and that there is no need for interpretation. And some of the things you are going to say, we will respond. You are, there is not going to be response, spontaneous response, because indeed, like I'm saying, this is a parliamentary session. People have got the right to say what they say, but we, some of the things, we don't have the right to act on them. Otherwise, it is going to be disruptive to the whole process, which is actually closing in this province, the Eastern Cape. Next.
Thank you, Chaperson. Chaperson, before I accept or not accept.
Apologies, sorry, I'm sorry. We need to get whether you, you support or you don't support the bill, Baba, from SGB because we, we've heard what you are saying. Um, but, but we need to get you because we must record it supporting or not supporting the bill.
Surely the explanation is not eating on my time. Chaperson, despite of what I've said here, I fully support the bill.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, we will start from the scratch.
Thank you very much. Chair, before I accept or not. Is it, is it by?
Name, I said start from the scratch.
Okay. I'm Alfred Imvagwenhu, Chaperson, Sato, Dujua branch of the Eastern Cape and the Wysilemini region. Chaperson, before I accept or not accept, is it by design or what that each organization in your committee is represented by one person? My understanding is that the African National Congress is the majority in the national parliament. That's why I'm asking this question, and I need an answer, chair. Let me proceed, chair, by saying I accept the bill. Can I repeat, chair? I accept the bill. More so, chair, that great R, it is considered now. And also, chair, I'm, I'm asking, why other pre-grades than great R are not considered in this bill? Again, chair. Can I get clarity, chair? We are here today, the majority of us is accepting the bill. Now, from here to where? What is going to happen? Step by step, clearly to everybody who is here. We don't want shibobo, Chaperson. We are in majority to say we accept it. I know even the colleagues at the back of me are going to accept this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Baba. Maybe there is, no, no, you, I'm done with you, you can take your seat. But I think before I forget, let me clarify this first point of is it by design? No, in principle, we are representing parties proportionally in almost all portfolio committees. Um, it has been a marathon of an exercise. Some of our own colleagues fell by the wayside, I can confess that. The ANC is supposed to be represented by six members. No, no, wait a bit, I'm coming, Baba, I'm coming. And the DA is supposed to be represented by two, and they are two here. And EFF is supposed to be represented by one. And the number three, the ACTP by one, she is here. And the IFB by one, he is not here. Let me indicate like I've explained, it's important that this house must know. We are on the ninth week going around the whole of South Africa. Some of our colleagues, as I'm talking to you now, are hospitalized. Baba, this is not a child's play. And you will never know why is a person fainting along the way, but the toll has taken its order. Let us just repeat there without explaining any further. And some might be having other commitment, but especially from the ANC, it has hit us and hit us. We are glad that this is the last province that we are visiting. Can we just repeat there? Your, your question is being answered by saying we were supposed to be six. Unfortunately, it is not to be today as we are here. You will, I will explain to you outside at the end of the process. Uh, you are next, thank you.
I am Chaperson of Sato in my region. I stand here, I support the bill. When looking at it at a short time that I had, I expected certain things that I could see. There are SGB meetings that I had also attended, and I have also learned certain issues out of these things. I support the bill in short.
Thank you very much, what an interpretation. You are a darling old man. Next.
Let's give him a hearing.
Good afternoon to the committee, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my name is Pierre Villiers. I am the provincial manager of the Federation of School, uh, School Governing Bodies of South Africa, FETSA, and I'm a resident of Jeffries Bay. The FETSA is, if I must be honest, partially supporting the bill, but for today's matter, we are not supporting clauses fourteen, four, five, sixteen, and thirty-three. Clause fourteen, disclosure of financial interest by members of a governing body. This proposed disclosure would constitute an unreasonable invasion of the privacy of both governing body members and their family. Furthermore, under the Protection of Personal Information Act of four of two thousand and thirteen, the processing of personal information must be racially related to the purpose for which it is attended. The information requested by clause fourteen is excessive and not relevant to the role of the specific SGB member in the school. The next one that we do not agree with is clauses four and five, which relates to admission of learners and the language policy. The bill limits the governing body's power to determine the school's admission policy. The power to determine the school's admission policy should be vested in the governing body. The governing body and the members of the school is the best interested people and vested in them to determine the admission policy and the requirements for admission to the school. The SGB's right to determine the capacity. The state should make sure they are near schools and not increase the capacity of overcrowded schools. In many schools, there are forty to sixty learners per class. A formula determining a school's capacity must be prescribed by institute to prevent disputes in this regard. The SGB's power concerning procurement, clause sixteen. The proposed amendment regarding central procurement is problematic for the following reasons. It seeks to enable HOD to withdraw the function of SGBs to purchase textbooks, teaching material, and equipment for schools. Given certain provincial departments' incapability to deliver books to schools, there is concern that the provincial departments will not have the capacity to deliver quality material on time. Providing quarterly reports on all income and expenses, clause fifty-three. The submission of quarterly reports apart from the annual audited financial statements that a governing body would have to submit will place a financial.
Unfortunately, Baba, it's cut, sucks, pity. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Chubas. I am rising in support of the bill, especially with regards to clauses that have to do with the finances of the schools and the early childhood development. I support that the school governing bodies must be in full control of the finances of the school. The manner, or let me wait. Okay. The manner in which the finances of schools have been run by the provincial government in the Eastern Cape has contributed to the closure of schools because it has left schools with little or nothing to run its schools on a day-to-day basis. There is this thing of wanting to centralize the finances of schools at the provincial office, and the provincial office has this proclivity to want to procure goods like your textbooks, your stationery, because it was in Jobek in two thousand and two, where the World Summit on Sustainable Development adopted what is called millennial development goals as adopted by the UNICEF, where U Great R was considered as an integral part of basic education. And I hope that in formulating the act that will flow out of this bill, you will also resource U Great R, that is early childhood development, adequately with professional teachers who will be properly remunerated. Uh, one last thing, I support the bill, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I spared you thirty seconds, and you didn't want to use it. Next.
Oh, Sestalwe, ne banza longa elikatko eli lapa namshange. And mi apa, kumfundisi unelsin nokobo, osava kui SACC, asave kui Department of Education Forum. Um, chaga si, e informazakos, figeleitka kulu, foreign gogobana, i document, ena fifty-six clause, singa kwasukufunda si kibe, sikwazukurisponja, M. Van Kock.
Because it was in Jobek in two thousand and two, where the World Summit on Sustainable Development adopted what is called Millenium Development Goals, as adopted by the UNICEF. Where U Great R was considered as an integral part of basic education. And I hope that in formulating the act that will flow out of this bill, you will also resource U Great R, that is early childhood development, adequately with professional teachers who will be properly remunerated. One last thing, I support the bill, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, I spared you thirty seconds and you didn't want to use it, next.
Osisalwe, nebantalonga elikatiko elila apa namshange. And miapa, kumfundi si, unelson nokobo, oseva kui SACC, oseve kui Department of Education Forum. Mchaga si, e informazako, zefigaleitka kulu, foreign kugubana, i document, ena fifty-six clause, singa kwa zukufunda si kribé, sikwa zukurispona mvenko. Lendo kutifana, ezimga kumbi, e elderly people, ogobana uniku i document ena fifty-six clause. Kumbia kusituwa, kufunekurispona njenga ngoku na, londo leo si tata njenga kangarukot. Indogobana, kwa i kubanga kuseni, ise kutika ngongo na ngoto, tinasbe sesi kribili i documenti, sesi paulili, sesi notes, zogobana, i clause etile netile, etiles yaambi sana nay. Ngoku kui clause, esis fuma nay, ngoku ti ngoku ti, pala pala pawa metro. Kutetwenge, aboshing, kutetwenge, ngongo kujala, kujana neskolo, kutetwenge finances. Es no kula uanganga bantobanga traine uanganga londo. Es is intos zefigasi spide, uba kengona siso, tige ngonage, kubeka peka pambili, nendo enjalo kanjani. Asikhasangi bill, kotoa, ingela, ingati noko, kuni kui chance, yokogobana nati, siboni sana ngayo. Then sikwa zke ngonage, ubane response, response efaka life. Galo nte la ke, sitike ngoku na ke, ewe, naspikisano hulumenti, ngoku bana mi bono emisha. Kotoa, noko ingati, stela nisnikiklayasha. Nkos.
Interpretation.
Thank you Chairperson and everyone.
Sorry Baba, sorry before interpretation, Baba mfundis. It appears you did not come clear whether you support or not. Because this is what, why we are here. We want to hear if people agree with this bill or they disagree with it.
I already said, as a member of SACC, we support the bill but not three hundred percent because of certain clause which are not clear about.
Okay, we heard you, thank you very much, may God bless you, thank you very much ma.
Thank you Chairperson and everyone, I'm Reverend Nelson Nokobo, a member of the SACC and the Department of Education Forum. We received the fifty-six clause document too late to be able to respond to all the clauses. Especially because we are elderly people, we take it as a kangaroo court. We would have loved to have more time as to see which clauses we will support. For instance, there were clauses about abortion, about liquor, about finances and all these need.
Colleagues, wait a bit mama, we will spare your time, don't worry. Colleagues, can I make a plea? We are in a parliamentary session. Somebody can go out and come and overturn everything that we shall have done because of simple thing, order. Can we keep calm, especially at the entrance there? Let us minimize our up and down movement. If we are forced to do so like I see, giving people water, do it silently. Thank you.
We would have liked to make informed decisions, we are not against the bill but we require more time. Thank you.
Did you support mama? Oh, by the by, you were interpreting, next.
Lalanga pambili, mande kuboli senesikreba sakho. Ngu siyabo ngaka, chaka. Kulangi ngiyase fuisile mini region. Chair, masbolele ukfuma na elituba. Kanganga kubana chair, it is my first opportunity to kufuma na elituba. Logobana sibe singati saita, kimpundo, yabantu anabetu, singa bantobamnyama, kukwizi intos shukumaya panga pagati. The seriousness yale program, sekoyo, chair, indenza nditutuzele, kubanti yenkumbule, chair, okuba, kwa tiklaku paya World Trade Center, tlaku klo klo ndemundo, kwa kwa mahashi, angena yo, aduba tuba londo. Now, klasfuma na this opportunity, sivaa, sisinga, kakulu, sbolela na parliamentary, kubana, ibesnigaza, elituba. Chair, e Freedom Charter, o clause seven. O ibeka, icho into kubana, the clause of learning shall be open to all. Now, this amendment bill is the charter, is this a app? Because tinna, siyayazi into kubana, i addressa, umthi mbi kari dress, the imbalances of the past. We know ke, okuba, the enemies of the freedom, the enemies of transformation, they will fight against that. Because was funu kusoloko besibona, besuperya. Even those that have been adopted by the capital, basako ulua, lele bill. But we support this building. We support this bill because it is opening an access of our learners to those schools that are more privileged, as black people and nabantu bananando. We support this bill because, yenza, abantu anabetu, basifuma nebe lingana, nabo, babo nabe ngono. That is the principle of equity. So, si supporta lepin. We will support this bill because sibona, i addressa, landos sibiza kubana, i people's education for people's power. We support this bill more and more when sibona intoka, it's addressing umthi mbi o great R, ogobana banyanzeleke, by the part of the school. As oku tinasi sato, we have been fighting against the casualization of workers, fighting for the better treatment of workers, as by include ayoke, o great R, kolondo.
Unfortunately, your time is up. Thank you very much, interpreter, please. Thank you very much Baba.
Greetings Chairperson and everyone, I'm Siyabonga Chaka from the Wuisile mini region. We're grateful for the opportunity to be able to discuss this very important bill, especially because it's with regards to our children's education. This is a very serious program and we remember what happened at the World Trade Center when education was discussed, that it was disrupted by horses. We also are grateful for this opportunity because this is in line with the Freedom Charter clause seven, where it says that the doors of learning shall be open to all. We also agree with this bill because it redresses the imbalances of the past and we know that the enemies of progress will fight against it. We support the bill Chairperson because our children will be equal to those that were always considered to be better. And it will also address the people's education for the people's power. And it also addresses the great R to be part of the school system, thank you.
Interpreter. Any trouble? Kunengingalap? Next.
Thank you Chairperson and the committee. I am Abongile Kuldenge, an educator and member of the South African Democratic Teachers Union stationed at Singisa Comprehensive High School. Firstly, Chair, let me express my gratitude for this bill and my firm support to the proposed bill. With that having been said, I would like to just make a few highlights of what I have noted from the bill and wish to bring to your attention and to the committee's attention in your dealing with the bills. Firstly, there is still a need to unpack the policy on learner attendance. This referring to a clause in the bill that seeks to amend the penalty provision in the case where a parent of a learner or any other person without a just cause prevents a learner from attending school for whatever reason. So there is still a need to unpack and redefine the policy on learner attendance as this has direct impact on the process of teaching and learning. All this points towards one direction, the parent's involvement, sorry, the teacher's involvement. Currently, it says the teacher must, after having noted that the learner did not come to school for three consecutive days, alert the principal and the principal would make a follow-up. But it doesn't really take into considerations the dynamics, especially in our black poor communities, of a learner who would come from home, going to school but never reach school, without the parents' knowledge of the learner not coming to school. So there's still a need to redefine that so that we do not have penalties imposed on parents when they really and honestly did not know that the child was not coming to school. So that's the first one. Secondly, there is also a need to unpack the issue of inclusiveness in our mainstream schools. Something that has been sought to be addressed by the Education White Paper six of two thousand and one, but after more than twenty years, something that has not really been done. I think Chair, there is a great need for onboarding and inducting new entrants into the education system in the form of educators on the issue of inclusive education and how they can make their classrooms inclusive. This bill has somehow failed in addressing such an issue because it is not really addressed even in the current bill, which is the South African Schools Act. So there's still that need to have inclusive education clearly and unequivocally addressed in the new bill. Lastly Chair, if there is any possibility to ask for the rescinding of that clause, I'm not sure which number of clause it is, but that of schools offering liquor, let it be rescinded so that we do not have to outright...
Unfortunately, your time is up, thank you very much, next. We heard you.
Greetings, I'm Musakwetiana, from Kindness Self-Training and Project, at Watu here at KST. Indo yamenza itiye tankal, I support the bill. But I have some issues. Because ge kandi jonge gakle, es intos a clause, but it tenda yu browser, aina ndo ya age limit. Ben kalela ma indoba, ge kukaswe, indoba, i age limit ba, msambi from four years or something like that. And genlisana lendoba, going to grade one, inga bingu seven years, four bakali, listlo ba, go five, abantu abangu kuba cleve. ASB ni, ndizekley SGP post, inga say kubeku requirements there. Kubeku requirements, because you found indoba, kutatwa omthi nga say kutatwa abantu with skills. Lobuti diploma to be, eh, kubeku SGP, oka nyumthi wakwa seven zamshamke with more than ten years, kusstradetic poshi. So that as obalulu tuapa eskolui. Eh, ndizekley pregnancy. Hey, it's a right thing, kasa injalo, but it's like we are motivating abantu bananu. Indoba, lo abanga pregnant, so that baso, touchwa ngas soft gloves. Ingas ni benelte la yobeke, yonge lando. Eh, naglena e schools ba mas tingsutwala during dondon activities. Ingas ni benelte la yobeke na layo. And ndizekley language. It's right, i right, dia kumbulindoba, wesni neskolo, I studied in first operator, jonge Africans, yes. But the problem is that ani, ni jonge laba kubeseke education, nga say ni jonge simultaneously. You can check now a chair, you are speaking English. So it means, abantu anaba, kutima kafunde ngas clause akota when going to tertiary level, uzofiganga slungu. Ingas es indos serbians, thank you Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much, I think we need interpretation, over to you Baba.
I say I, there are no age limits and the dimension of four years and the great R that is being applicable, is said seven years is being prescribed. And nowadays children are also clever. The requirements should also be there, like the SGB to assist at the school and coming to the question of pregnancies that are also applicable. It should not be seen like encouraging children to be pregnant. We should not treat children with soft gloves. And coming to the issue of selling liquor at schools, I also wants to address on that. And I also want to say we need also to consider the language effect that is being used. That should also be considered. Although I would like to say, I must also stress that I am of interest that there should not be a neglecting of our language like isikosa. It should also in some way be considered, that is what I want to say.
Thank you Baba, next.
Good afternoon to everyone and may I greet the house in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ, amen. My name is Fezile Potwana, one of the chiefs in the Drangensberg area of the Amashlubi. So Mr. Nodada is one of my subjects because he's a schlubi. With tracking this bill, I would thank you the committee because I've seen your contributions, even the questions from Mr. Nodada when the committee assembled. I work as a director of MDI Projects, MDI Projects, with the one that was presenting yesterday in parliament in the Portfolio Committee for Education, that is higher education. We are bridging the gap between the basic education and the higher education. When tracking the education in South Africa, one should look at the State Police of nineteen sixty-one, when the blacks were supposed to be excluded from education or given a certain type of education. This resulted in a very poor system of education. Poor support by the communities, by the parents and with no infrastructure. So looking at this bill, the social impact assessment indicated that there will be infrastructure for great R. So to me, the reason that I support this bill, it caters for the initial stage of a child, which is very important. But the problem that I have, as we know our country, as we know our leaders, will those with that police infrastructure reach us? Will we have those facilities in our area, that is the question. But the bill is number one, it's a very good milestone of our democracy, amen.
Baba, can you emphasize, do you support the bill?
Initially I said, I really support the bill because it makes me to be happy because it's a milestone of this democracy, so it's a good bill.
Thank you, thank you Baba. Any need for interpretation? Okay, no need, Baba.
Thank you Chairperson. Let me greet the leadership and everyone inside the hall. I am Zuelinzi Mantoto, a DA member, Democratic Alliance member in good standing, which is at the biggest opposition party in our country, we all know that. Firstly, we object to the bill entirely. We object to the bill that seeks to centralize power into the hands of the ANC government. Minister and officials in the Department of Basic Education, who have destroyed... who have destroyed our education system. They seek to strip away powers from the SGBs to determine their own admission and language policies as parents and communities who know what's best for their children, while centralizing buying learner material, which can be abused for caters to get tenders. The bill has also not adequately consulted with homeschooling. The bill ignores issues like eradicating pit toilets in schools and build proper infrastructure in our schools. Also, the issue of school dropouts is not yet addressed. They failed to develop our own Kosa language. And that we are supposed to start math, science and accounting in Kosa. That's where they should focus instead of blaming few schools that are successful in mother tongue education for their own failures. I raise my case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next.
I'm telling a family, let's go back, so I go. The bullies, the inco mona, this is Kamkendane. Did you long ago, let you qua what it? Oh, I'm glad I'm telling a family, I in see me, I give you a, it be, I be, I see. I believe in them. Or um, so fast, I could have stood there, so I didn't see. Who can I go to see? Now, I see, I saw cola, I did, I'm cool, I'm sorry, that's cool, we need control, oh, Tishan. Control, I'm a quetta. Oh, Rebecca. I'm a police. You can only be on pace, cool, we need, he in the hour, he's a, he's on peggy, look, Tishan. What an am change, they are pity, they are, that's a control, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a para.
Reality. This government is misusing money and spending it with the Bella Bill, which is supposed to be the last. They are supposed to go to our rural areas. Maybe those people that are higher up there, who proposed and drafted this bill, they don't know the reality that we are sitting with in their own areas. Our children are first to study in these languages, your English. Our children and most of the time, even the teachers that are teaching these children, are not even the local teachers. These are the teachers that come from other countries. I didn't say that is wrong, but the problem, our children don't even listen. They can't listen to the pronunciation of these teachers. Instead of what the government is supposed to do is to teach our children in their vernacular language, which is Kosa. They should study their subjects in the science, the maths, with their mother tongue instead of promoting. You can hear now, we are busy talking English, but the Kosa is being ignored. Even the government is not taking serious this language of Kosa. That is why you can hear even at the back there, they are agreeing with me. The way you can see, they are agreeing with me, yes.
I call on colleagues, as a belief.
Yes.
Wait, wait a bit Mama, your time will be spared. Colleagues, don't fail your own process. Fire on them.
Thank you very much. The dignity, as they said here, has the dignity of our children and even the SGBs has been stripped away by this current government. And you know what? The worst part of it, in my school, in my village, they know nothing about this Bella Bill here. I am here even now, I registered outside, but I didn't get the documents that the people managed to get here. What? It means the process was rushed. Panzi ngai Bella Bill, panzi. Thank you.
Okay. It was few and straightforward English. Next.
Good afternoon Chair and the members of the committee. My name is Pastor Peter Mwashudi, a member of our Tambo Ministers Fraternal and also Chaplain of Moral Regeneration Movement. Whilst we accept, we accept this bill with two exceptions that affect the morals of our society. The first one is the selling of alcohol in schools. We all know that when there is alcohol, the resultant effect is going to be drunkenness. And we know that our Father God hates drunkenness because drunkenness is a sin and it degenerates the morals of any society. The second one is the abortion of children at the age of 12. The abortion issue. Because the main fact is, why was it even mentioned to be stated there as far as a 12-year-old child? It means you are condoning sexual intercourse in a young child of 12 years old, which is against the godly principles. So that one should not even be there. This is our submission as Moral Regeneration Movement.
Thank you and thank you so much Baba. The world is listening, parliament is also listening. Next.
Mine is very clear Chairperson. I object the amendment of the bill, specifically section four and five. I was meant to believe that there are issues that are very critical that we as the country should focus on, such as the state of schools, the pre-tartan toilet. There is a specific school that the parliament itself, the Portfolio Committee, visited in Yuki. The name of the school is Iditabani, that was in the year 2021. I went to that school by myself to conduct oversight. Nothing has happened, the school is still like that. So we need to focus on issues that are very critical in terms of infrastructure of the schools and making sure that learners are studying in a very good conditions. If you can go and see how learners are studying and the manner how schools are conducted is prepared, more than having such a bills being amended, of which I don't want to say is a waste of money, but to me it seems as a grab of power, nothing to do with transformation. I thank you.
Thank you very much Baba. Next.
Thank you very much Chairperson. My name is Yusuf Kasim. I'm the provincial chairperson of the Democratic Alliance and a member of the provincial legislature in the Education Portfolio Committee in Bishu. Let me state from the outset that we oppose this bill. And I've heard many SGB members speaking here today and many of them speak against sections of the bill. At the end say they support the bill. If you support this bill as an SGB member, it's like chickens voting for Nandos. Because you are voting for your powers to be taken away to officials of the department and we don't trust the officials of the department. And I'll tell you why. Officials of the department have proven to us that all they want to do is interfere in schools for factional interests. If there are appointments of principals, deputy principals, HODs, they will then go and take away functions of the SGB, put together their own panels and then employ their own friends and family. We have seen it time and time again. Every time you take away power from schools and communities and you want to convince us it's about redress, it's got nothing to do about redress. Even those few former Model C schools, not all of our children can fit in there. Even if we have to put all of our children there, they're not going to fit in there. We're only going to solve that by building quality schools. It's about grabbing power. Section four, section five. Section 17 deals with the withdrawal of SGB functions. Section 21, dissolution of SGBs. If we support this bill, basically we are giving a blank cheque to the HOD to say go and control what you want to interfere in controlling schools. We can't do that, it would be irresponsible of us to do so. Secondly, withdrawal of SGB functions or determining of the SGBs of special schools, section 19. Now I have met with the SGB members and teachers of special schools in the Eastern Cape. There is interference from the department in many of our special schools based on factional interests. If we give the minister the power to determine how these SGBs are put together, it will only be for whoever is controlling the right faction to determine who is employed and how the school is run. And this would be irresponsible for us to do. Section 16, L T S M central procurement. The SG, the HOD of the Department of Education in the Eastern Cape, last year Dr. Naladi Mbugde was suspended and then she was given a golden handshake. Let me tell you why. Because she refused to choose the suppliers that her handlers wanted her to choose. And then they put in an acting HOD in order to conclude the L T S M contracts. It's about corruption. Our schools are getting substandard workbooks, textbooks, stationery because of the corruption of this department. We must give the power to the SGB to do the procurement, not give the power to the provincial department for them to be able to take that money out of the department through kickback.
Unfortunately my man, your time is up. Thank you very much, you have made yourself clear. Baba.
Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I want to applaud this bill for apart from two exemptions. The first example for applauding this bill is this fantastic provision that the attendance of great R is to be made compulsory. I can just say hallelujah to that, that's absolutely fantastic. Amen. But then two exemptions. And that is that we, or most of these people here, fought so hard for democracy and for democratic principles. Now an SGB, as far as I know, is a democratically elected governing board. And now you are taking away and stripping some powers of that SGB. You are taking away the democratic elected governing board of a local area. It is undemocratic. It goes against the heart of what most of the people in this country fought for and longed for. And then the second exemption is to to provide for the prohibition of corporal punishments at school activities and at hostels accommodating learners of schools. If you ask most of these people sitting here, according to the Department of Statistics, of statistic, is that most of them believe, according to that department, in God and in the word of God. And the word of God allows me and allows us to regulate the punishment of our children when they are disobedient. And this goes directly against that. Thank you for listening to me Chair, thank you. God bless.
Let us confirm, did you support or not Baba? Yeah, emphasis, we just want, did you support the bill?
May I answer that in a question? May I answer that? In similar fashion as I support you, you are a fantastic chairman. But you always, you all, but you always come back and say, do I support it? As if that is the only question. And the same principle applies to this law, this amendment and this bill. Yes, I started off by saying I applauded, there's so many wonderful things in it. But there are two exemptions. Until we fix that, naturally we can't give it a blank cheque. Thank you Chair.
We heard you Baba, we heard you. Thank you, thank you very much. Next.
Yes, yes, yes. Greetings everyone. I'm Lakim Omagwe from Kosa SGB, one of the biggest organizations in South Africa. Everyone knows it, from every town, every village and every city. Today I stand before you. I just wanna let everyone in this house, I just wanna say I support this bill. I really support this bill. And then when coming to alcohol stuffs, I can't take my son or my daughter to school and after maybe getting drunk on the sports field, I can't drive my kids from school to home while under the influence. I don't agree with that. But I support the bill. And then when coming to SGB members, my government, these people are also human beings. They elected them from the different schools just because they are always available. They are always on time when the principal needs them. These people, they deserve a salary as well because they are the human beings too. Without hesitation, I still support this bill.
Thank you and thank you very much. Next.
The right word, okay. Thank you Chair. My name is Vyan Imdluli from Guanobulhe Sinas Secondary School, Oar Tambo, inland, second seven. I support the bill. But on these ones, let us have more clarity and more involvement of parents during the pregnancy period. More and more from the rural areas. Because whenever an educator or a supporting staff is helping during that stage, there are suspicions that this thing have happened because Mr. Sorinso or Ms. Sorinso was there. Therefore, parents must always be there during that period to make things very safe for our teachers. In the bill, there's nothing that is more clearer to me concerning the witch doctors or Izangomas and Uktwas. Then I want more clarity on that because it's facing us in the rural areas. Thirdly, most speakers have applauded in this one, but I need more that statement for our SGBs must be looked at in this bill. Then the allocation and distribution of educators and other L T S M to the rural schools, there must be more bias in the supply of these educators in those areas. Then let us just do away with this selling of alcohol, whether it's during what and what and what in our schools. Lastly, schools must procure their L T S Ms. Thank you Mr. Chair.
Thank you, very clear, straightforward. Next. Thank you Mermet Baba, interpreter. Thank you.
Firstly, I support the bill. The closure of small schools should also be considered, the numbers at the schools. And it should not be addressed simply because the numbers are not reaching the number of 130. And the education issue needs to be addressed. And the issue of transport should also be addressed. And there should be greater involvement of the great R. All in all, I support the bill. I also finally must thank the government for having came down to us. I thank you.
Thank you. Next. Thank you and thank you very much. Next, interpretation.
Thank you Chairperson, I'm also a DA member. When I look at this bill, I see that there's 56 clauses and most people who support it have clearly.
Order! Colleagues, order! You are drowning the speaker. Thank you very much Mama, proceed.
When I look at this bill, I see there's 56 clauses and most people who support it have clearly been reading it long before coming here because I see that people are mentioning clause number whatever and we have just been reading it for 30 minutes. I also don't support the bill because now they're starting with liquor in schools, what is going to follow? Will it be drugs and prostitution? So no, I definitely don't support the bill.
Thank you. Next speaker.
On my extreme right, please, you know what you should be meditating now and praying about? Is that because I'm coming for you, you pray that I must point at you? That is what you should be doing now, rather than making noise. Over to Yonwana.
Good evening to everybody. I am Siswanda Nyakhaja from Bratupadawata. I am a member of OTV. I rejected the Bella Bill and its attempt to centralize power, strip SGB and schools of their power to determine admission and language policies. And this engaged at Mata Tang Education and enforced homeschooling regulations without proper engagement with the sector. The bill ignores the real issues in the education system. Learners who can't read for meaning in any language does not deal with the education pit toilets in schools and build adequate infrastructure in schools. Lastly, does not address the massive issue of droughts in schools. Thank you.
Thank you very much Yonwana. Next. You know what I'm going to do colleagues? Parliamentary Protection Unit, get rid. I just want to set one example. I know there will be order. Over to you Baba. Thank you, interpreter.
I am a vume, I stand here. I am a DA member, I do not support the bill. There are issues which are not properly addressed by the government. For instance, issues like mad school buildings that we are still having and asbestos issues, problems that are not properly addressed yet at this school. And there are other things that are not addressed, the great R issues you get and another thing is that people had to work for about five meters to get nearer to their schools.
Much Baba. Next.
Are those who are beneficiaries of the S W I S system, the system of segregation? Because they don't want us to tamper with their admission policy. Because they want to continue with their comfort in terms of how they admit in their own schools. And secondly, they don't want us to tamper with their language, the language of the oppressors. So they want to remain with that comfort of theirs. Hence you will have people who are reacting to this bill, hence it is this highly contested. But Chair, I want to note these few things in the virtue of accepting this bill. That one. In page four, as it relates to section 10, which relates to corporal punishment, please tamper with the definition of what constitutes corporal punishment. That's one. Two, in relation to page 12, section 8A of the South African Schools Act, it was already said 10 times Chair that we must do away with the liquor question. By the way, it was a privilege of the Model C schools. By the way, even that liquor, we don't know that at schools. It was their privilege. But we must do them a favour and say it mustn't be at schools at all. And thirdly Chair, in page 49, I'm inviting your indulgence as parliament to section 17, section 18, come, section 19 of the Employment of Educators Act Chair, which talks to misconduct, both serious and normal misconduct. both serious and normal misconduct. It would appear to me that in that section, section seventeen in particular, educators are prejudiced. In that, the section starts off by saying an educator must be dismissed if he or she is found to have done this. That can't be correct. What you simply do, you say these are the offenses. And you say these are sanctions that can be given to an educator. You don't prescribe a particular offense to can be a dismissible offense, such that when one goes to a hearing, already that person is prejudiced. I support this bill unreservedly with this, Chair. Number seven, for whom support the pill, then go, Chair.
Siswe, Lamtegas. Thank you. Next. Poke like a real secretary of a region. Next.
Good afternoon. This is Paul Gamorissin from KST Municipality, Ward three, Ward nine. I support this bill reservedly. There is a question of infrastructure and security in schools. Please provide clarity on that. Infrastructure specifically on learners' carrier packs. In most public schools, there is no infrastructure such as locker things for learners. With security, maybe we provide public schools with an infrastructure closer to what the national key points are enjoying. Security. Schools have become a den for thugs, mapara, and anyone who seeks to break the law and vandalize the existing school infrastructure. I support the bill reservedly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Baba. Ikosi Ali Pelimoya will be he will be the last one to speak, but while he's speaking, can I request Mam Tandi to come forward? Because she must brief me on what is happening from the overflowed outside. Actually, if there are people, we are going to combine them. You are not only going to be the people speaking alone. You are going to be combined with those outside if there are people readily available to speak. Baba, the stage is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Toba Devono. I'm from Padawat. I disagree with the bill, especially the aspect of liquor. I totally disagree with that. I suggest that the committee should propose the employment of psychology and social worker in school. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you very much. An applause for the round. I forgot to applaud you. Give them a round of applause for the manner in which they have conducted themselves. Awu. I'm going down to Timna. I'm coming that side. You did not understand. It's right, left. You pass right and keep left. I'm coming.
There is no overflow.
No overflow. Okay, thank you. Oza. 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 One, two, three, four. Oza. Oza. Melayelu, oza. I passed here last time. Let me be sure of my people. Help me count, Baba. I passed here last time. You were still asleep. No. No, help count. Baba is coming. Count the number there, Baba. We need to need seven. Okay. She was very close. Nice, the man. Hamba, Baba. Hamba, Mama. Wenahla. I passed here.
No!
And you did not see me. And now you want me to see you. Three more, eh? Okay. One, two, three. Hamba. Mama. Operation Jutikus. Protection Services, are you sure we are fifteen now? Covered. Thank you very much. Ndate.
The stage.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. My name is Zuko Zimu. I stand here as a citizen of this country, concerned. And I stand for no political organization. I'm happy that I'm speaking right now because I've been listening to all the deliberations by people who are here. And I think if we are honest, we are going to agree that most of the people who spoke here really don't agree with this bill. Because you can't say you agree but have reservations. Then it means then there is something within the bill that does not make sense. So intentionally, all of us here, with all the limitations that we have raised, as much as we have said that we agree with the bill, we don't. Because if we agree with something, it means we agree with it hundred percent. So we really don't agree with this thing. We don't agree with the alcohol. We don't agree. There is also another issue that I have that people seem not to raise also. Amendment clause six, that amendment, section six A, where the minister seems to have the authority to appoint anybody, to appoint anyone to come to a school and teach. There is an issue even in America because we have a tendency to copy what the Americans do. They have people who are homosexuals who come to teach great R students about their lifestyles. This is what you are giving the minister the authority to do. She can appoint anybody to come and teach children, even though they don't have SACE registration. So there is a problem with this. So I want to say, as much as we want to to sound politically connected and all friendly with everyone and say we agree and we support, but intentionally ninety-eight percent of everyone who has stood here does not support this bill, as I don't support this bill.
The only people with the right to educate this hall could be different. Please do not try to become a teacher unnecessarily. Thank you very much. Next. You are next. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next. Okay, there was a need for interpretation. Over to your mama, interpreter.
Greetings, Chapessin and everyone. I will start with the issue of pregnant children. Where the teachers are now expected to turn into nurses. Where are we going to draw the balance when teachers must now find themselves as nurses? More important things that the department should be concentrating on are being ignored. For an example, in my village, the toilets are not only pits, but they also have no doors and therefore compromising the dignity of the children. This bill is only being supported and brought to the fore because it will benefit certain people instead of the department looking after its own professionals, the teachers, who are sacrificing for the children. And bringing alcohol into the education system is only going to cause further problems. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings to the Chapessin and the House at large. I'd love to go to the deeper motive of this exercise here. There's a lot of questions when it comes to the motive. I don't know, but I believe that it is known by the Chapessin. Now, our government-
Your name first. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Batanwa Mdalie is coming from Singisa Comprehensive High School and a member of SATU. Now, our government has not even told us, I don't remember, the cause of death of the incident of Nyobeni. But we see our government officials coming here with a bill having a clause about alcohol in schools. To me, that is immoral and even notorious. Now, there are many things that have been outlined here about the challenges of this bill, including the timeframes of starting the bills, which were not adequate for us as the people who are to support or not support the bill. Now, these things, pregnancy, abortion, liquor, infrastructure, in all its aspects, especially infrastructure, because CAPS document, when it is defined, infrastructure becomes the key of CAPS document, which is the curriculum used in South Africa. We know that it is a disaster in East End Cape. Cutting edge is all over, giving us that. But we don't find much of it here. Now, even the infrastructure consequential, it gives a bad image about it, even the definition of a class by our police, which talks about one is to thirty. And that is very much impossible if infrastructure is not taken care of because it is a prerequisite. So our government must please take a lead on that. The slogan "Better Life for All" must be implemented. There's also something, I don't know whether it's supposed to be here or not, but there's been a cry about either declaring the post for teachers or the employment of teachers. There's something called Peter Mokel Model. I don't know whether it's supposed to be here or not, but please take note of that. It's one cry when it comes to the Department of Education and the employment of teachers. So with all of these things, the motive behind all this exercise doesn't sound so much-
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. But before you leave, tell this house, do you support or you do not support?
I support the bill.
Thank you. Next.
Everyone, standing before you is Sivachangela, all the way from Padawat.
Awu, awu, awu. Over to you, Baba.
I'm a member of the DA. I'm Sivachangela, as I just said now. Never have I ever in a lifetime imagined that our very own government would bring up such an idea of selling alcohol in schools. Firstly, as the youth, we suffer, we have an alcohol problem. And that's the honest truth. Even our teachers have an alcohol problem. Now you bring it much closer to them. Imagine standing in front of a class, knowing that at the back there's stock, there's alcohol. How will you cope in that? Secondly, I'm totally against the fact that our government wants to strip off SGP's rights and the authority to have a say in what happens in schools because they are parents, they know what's best for their children. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Next.
Good day, good day, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Aimolele from South African School Governance Bodies. We are representing a very big organization that is all over South Africa.
Please, and oh please, do not drown the speaker.
In nine provinces of South Africa. But honorable members, honorable Rony, I'm so surprised to be having someone like Suker there in front of us because there are serious allegations with that parliament. But you are still having here there. This is uncalled for. She's going around confusing the community. But we are still having there. Don't you have any mechanism or disciplinary committees that you are disciplining people? I think she should have excused herself. I'm telling you, someone came here with a serious allegation and she's not, for the first time, doing that. She's doing that. She's doing that deliberately, confusing our people around.
Okay, okay, let me correct some. Wait a minute. Let me correct some. It would be unparliamentary to point a finger at any person. You would rather just do this rather than to point a finger. Thank you. Proceed.
And my minute must be fine. Honorable members, if someone did like that and then we are supposed to be our leaders, we don't allow such behavior to happen to all of you, like being partisan, showing that you are representing a white monopoly capitalist. You have got an agenda. You have been sent by the capitalist to advocate their agenda in the midst of our people, our community. It is uncalled for. It is wrong. And I think she must excuse herself up until maybe his party or her party put someone on a behalf. We can't have someone like that, really. Number two, this is not a service delivery caucus. People are coming here with a lot of accusations and then they are talking about potholes. This is not a pothole. We don't have time to address potholes here. This is a basic bill. An education basic bill. We are debating a bill here. And we must not come here with being partisan. And because if that is the case, other parties should have been mobilized and spread some papers around. And then we'll see who's ruling. Like really. Ladies and gentlemen, let's do the right thing. All of us black people here, let us not be manipulated here. and being driven to white monopoly agenda. Let's support the bill. Support and be, we support the bill. But someone like that one must be removed.
Thank you, thank you. You are next.
Thank you very much, Chairperson of the session. Afternoon, Chairperson, together with your committee.
Icon, shh. There is a speaker on the floor. Granted.
Afternoon, Chairperson, together with your committee and the House at large. Standing in front of you is Ms. Otolo Bota, Regional Education Convener of Wissile Mini Region. I support the bill hundred percent. And there is only one thing that I would like this committee to bring to their attention when they go back, that is the notion of selling alcohol in our schools. And also, I've got one suggestion. There was a draft policy, there was a draft rural education policy, which we strongly believe as a union that it can assist the small schools, which we simply regard them as non-vibrant, non-vibrant schools. Thank you very much.
Very progressive, next.
Thank you, Chairperson. Good afternoon to everyone around in this hall. I'm standing in front of you is Zuko Sekiba from Wissile Mini Region. The only thing I would like to say, Chairperson, I support the bill. Let us decolonize our education. Keep on doing the good work, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Korten Bondah, next.
Greetings, Chairperson. It is Louvoya Tegana, the Chairperson of Tendana branch, under the region called Wissile Mini Region. I am coming before you to support this bill. In support of this bill, noting some few things, that in that bill, there's SGP capacitation there that is needed. Because slalo, when we cry saying we have got teachers that cannot speak Tosa in our rural areas, who employed those people? It is the SGP from those rural outskirts. It tells you that how can you employ somebody who does not speak the language of these learners and begin to complain from the government? Two, we cannot, as much as we support the bill, but we cannot allow a situation where alcohol is being sold at schools. That we are appealing to you to consider that. Three, the grade R issue that is being taken, that is being considered now. Because back in schools, those grade R learners are not being, are not funded there. Even the grant, where a school has to start with grade R, feeding them, but those people are not funded for. Maybe this time around, this time around, maybe we can knock sense because, because we appreciate the stance because it talks to, Lendo iti, education is a societal matter and the people shall govern. And our voice maybe now can be heard so that all what is wrong in terms of governing the schools, ibe ya lungi, so thanks, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much, next.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon to everybody present in this room. Ikamalamjungutogosalem Solongo, di suga is Section 27. Just a bit of background with Section 27. Section 27 being a public interest law center that seeks to achieve substantive equality and social justice in South Africa guided by the principles of the Constitution. We use our laws, advocacy and legal research as well as community mobilization to assist communities to access healthcare services as well as basic education. And to go into this right now, we had submitted, we had made our submissions in 2022 and actually had some of our colleagues make these submissions in Parliament in November 2022. And on the whole, we submit, I mean, we, we support the bill and we made the following submissions. Although there are many more submissions, I'm just going to focus on these three. The first one being the corporal punishment issue. And our submission is that Section 27 welcomes the move to define corporal punishment and to clarify that it, clarify that it is abolished with the full schooling environment, within the school, school, school environment. However, we believe that the abolishment of corporal punishment should be extended to include any punishment that is, that is cruel and degrading, including verbal and emotional abuse. Therefore, Section 10 should be revised to extend the abolishment of corporal punishment to include the abolishment of any form of punishment that is cruel and degrading. To provide clarity on this, Clause 1 should also be revised to introduce a definition of any form of punishment that is cruel and degrading, which would include punishment which belittles, humiliates, denigrates, scapegoats, threatens and scares a, a, or ridicules, ridicules a child. This would therefore encompass non-physical forms of cruel and degrading punishment such as name-calling or threatening of learners. And then the issue of learner dropouts. While we believe that learner dropouts is a cru, is a crucial issue that needs to be addressed, we submit that it will not, it will not be...
Unfortunately, your time has elapsed. But can you come clear? Do you support the bill?
I, I stated that we support the bill.
Thank you very much. That's the important thing we want to, next.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairperson. Thank you very much, Chairperson. I'm Vue Tenwa. I'm Vue Tenwa from SADU, a full member in good standing. I'm full support of the bill. But I want to do two for emphasis on two things. The introduction of indigenous language in our curriculum must be key. Two, our curriculum must respect all the cultures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Clear and straightforward, next. My left, get ready.
Thank you, Chairperson. My name is Ms. Duma Shosha, member of SADU.
Accident. Oh no, it was an accident. Proceed, Baba.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm saying I'm Ms. Duma Shosha, representing SADU, Wissile Mini Region. The first thing I wanted to say, I am in full support of the bill. Under two considerations that I would love to have a say along. One, I disagree with the issue of liquor in our schools. Secondly, I would love the parliamentarians, when they are looking to this bill, to also relook around the issue of white paper sticks to be taken to the ladder because it's one of the things that we are looking for in our schools. Along to that, we would love to get a consideration of the opening of teacher colleges because the quality of teachers that we are having in the universities are not the same as those educators that were there in the teacher colleges. So, so we would love to get that particular opening of the teacher colleges to be taken on board. Lastly, Chair, we are not really confused. We know the type of education that we are looking for. People's education for people's power and then it must lead by our communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, you have made your statement. Baba, next.
I am Olilizwe Mguni, the branch secretary of SADU from Lusigisigi branch, as well as a member of the District Education Forum. Chair, it has been raised here more than two times that one of the members of the panel is being implicated in some wrongdoings. So I thought by now she was supposed to be excused. So I want to support that statement. I proceed by saying that I support the bill. Let me start with that. As it ensures the, the education transformation agenda. In fact, it's long overdue, especially through Clause 2C, which avoids willful disruption, interruption, hindering and obstruction of school activities. As SADU, we do not condone for sure the use of alcohol for any purpose in schools. I support the issue of draft rural, rural education policy that it needs to be implemented. I think one of the colleagues mentioned that before me. The school and the governing bodies must remain responsible for the school administration. And lastly, we propose that the funds must be decentralized to schools. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you very much, next.
Greetings to you, Chairperson. My name is Pili Somad Kokolo, SADU member in good standing from Polikaba Region. As a person working at school, I fully support the bill. We are happy with insertion of grade R in the mainstream. It was our cry for a long time. The issue of, of selling of alcohol in schools, whether there is a function or not, I, I disagree with it. Thank you, Chairperson.
Korten Bondah, thank you, Mama, next.
Afternoon. Apa inchlin wogomtokoy? Chairperson, sisa, sine lunda. Lokuba ipati, yotisaida. Ngazindwe zufanlu kwenzeka, ku future leaders izigabantu anabetu, zange salfumana elitoba. We wish lisetjenzi swe ngendleleyi yoyo nyani lukaithe uchinto by being here today. Kuzokuenzwalento, ibonakale i footprints zayo. Kuyoyo, ngelondo basisapahta Chairperson, koto akinoko, izukolo, sindawozoku konta umtu. Nobaba bini abantu anabaku esasako lo safe vale, oba HOD, makatisa, besloke tisaidai eto makafake community. Abantu anabatu, they need to be schooled because especially ku rural areas is kolose tu afar apart from each other. So kaguzavano esip because people abandon by five, it's unfair to abantu anabana who doesn't have money to be taken to two towns. Okusinisi, noko, gaske otishala, bangenzwa manes. Bayenzle petagochi, mabapelele pa, bangayike ngukupennesar ukuchekishuba, asimazina klasesa udaleka tinuntu sivaa kutubeleki. Si asapahta i bill imalisasako lo kotali ziwabantu in SGP. Thank you.
Shh. Mama, before you leave, I might have missed it. Ik ubanika malaku.
Ndinguposhia, nompo melelo, mavuso ndesuka EVM R Wissile Mini Region ndisesa SADU edu ywa unobala wakon.
Well said, thank you very much. Next, okay interpretation.
We're proud to be a part of this decision-making process on behalf of our future leaders. May the footprints of what is happening year to day be visible. We support the bill. Oh, yes, we support the bill, but we also know a school to be a place for producing leaders regardless of the numbers of children because our rural communities are far apart. Therefore, the emphasis shouldn't be on the numbers of children in schools. And also, the teachers should not be turned into nurses. This is unfair because they studied pedagogics. And we also support the quarterly auditing of financials. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last but one, or is it the last person? Okay, the last but one. Fire on, Mama.
Afternoon, Chair and the committee. I'm Pili Swandamase from Wissile Mini Region, a SADU member in good standing. I fully support the bill, Chair. But Chair, be considerate on the issue of selling alcohol in our schools, whether it's for fundraising purposes or not. No, I'm against that. And also, Chair, school funds must be decentralized. And also, we are not nurses, Chair. As she has alluded, reconsider that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, very progressive, next.
Goleni Chair, emalanga. Ndingupinkisi tlakawe, usuka edzolo branch secretary, and I pichi R. Eh, main ndizengo kokba, ndingutishala, oh proudly, otishabantu anabantu ngolu imilake. Ndi, ndifuna uki si asapahta biya. Korake ngakumbi kulendwe ino grade R, abe ufaki.
One of the crimes in Parliament is the situation where you walk across the floor. I might have forgotten to indicate it, bear with me. But under normal circumstances, you are not expected to move from the left to the right, from the right to the left because you are causing confusion to the chair. I've just seen somebody moving from my right to the left. Your sins are forgiven. No one should ever emulate that going forward. Thank you. Proceed, Ma.
Tantkebeze la Chair. Ndi kulomba kakrade R, that nje ngba ezo includewa, sifuna abalu kaku pipi enwe tu, together with imali maibu ye izi, we SGP's. We fully support that, thank you.
Thank you.
I am being, I'm a proud teacher. I am teaching children in their language and I concentrate on grade R and I support the SGP's. I wish they could be included so that we proceed. I thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Give yourself a round of applause for your good presentation. Keep left, pass right. Keep left, pass right. Eh eh, if, if you keep on talking, I'm just deliberately going to pass you. Are there people outside? Okay. Thank you for your advice. Let's go. I'm coming back. Eh, I said if you keep on talking, I will also go and keep on passing you. Is it an overflow? Ah, wait, don't worry. Even as long as I've pointed at them, they must go and talk. Don't worry. Even if they are more than fifteen, don't worry. I'm in charge. Shh. How many are they? Ah, no, as long as I've pointed at them, it's my prerogative. Did I point at you? Okay, okay, no. They will be the last ones. Take them, the two, we'll see what next. Eh, I have never said this is the last round. It is never over until I say it is over. Take your time. Okay, shh, colleagues. Eh. How many are they? They are extra by two, ne? No. They are okay. No, don't worry. Baba, the state is yours.
Uh, yo, I am Zanilem Tadana. A general overseer for Kingdom Pulpit and Koinonia Christian Center. I say no to the bill. With reservations of five percent, yes, to your, to your um, statement of intent. This statement of intent concerns that the motive, that's why I say in the first one, no. But honestly, the statement of intent is good, that you find a way. That's why I say no. First thing first, let me put it again, the omarimtadana, you can use mark stroke tumble. You seem to contradict yourselves. One, I'm part of a board of leaders, Christian leaders. Somebody who came from liquor board. They consulted us on a certain act that governs the liquors all over the show. And they said, according to them, according to the act, nobody can sell liquor within a range of hundred meters. When we questioned them further, they said, no, it is because of the bylaws. Then again, you bring in the liquor part here. Two, in South Africa, you are, you are an adult when you are eighteen years old. But when coming to our children making decisions, you speak about a twelve-year-old, knowing very well that a twelve-year-old cannot make right choices. They are under the parents. Number three, as a leader, as a part of leadership, as a collective, we called, we called civic organization at the time, it was the church and Ingoz. Then you are, you are moving very fast minus the church. You consulted four churches, you called them kinds of churches. And those four leaders, they are members of your party, which you know very well, not us. Again, you have consulted some bodies here who are part of your affiliates. They discuss this. Then you come to us as a church, you include us with the rest of people who politicize the situation. You seem to, you seem to agree with Ali Spirit's ten-point plan to take powers of parents.
Eventually, your time has elapsed. But can you make it clear? Do you support?
I don't support.
That is the most important thing we wanted to know. Thank you. Next.
Thanks my Chair. Standing here is Lungil Fazi, a member of Sato in Polikawada region. I stand here to support the bill fully Chair. There are two areas, I will only cite three things. As written in the bill. Firstly Chair, the issue of alcohol. I would love to align myself with the latter speaker only in the portion of the liquor board and its laws pertaining alcohol. We do not want alcohol at school. And Chair, the issue of great, great R. To us, it is a great achievement. We've been fighting for this. Hence, we support this bill Chair. And lastly Chair, concerning the learner support material, we insist Chair, that the school should procure, instead of it being centralized, schools should do their procurement regarding to learner support material. That is what I like Chair, because this is the most thing that you would like to hear. I fully support this bill Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next.
Let me greet the Chair and the members up there. I am Zukisimambi. I'm from the Department of Education, Amatole East District. I'm also a citizen of this country. Eh, one, I don't support eh, the use of alcohol in our schools. Secondly, I support the issue of language as prescribed by the bill. Thirdly, the issue that is stated in section thirty-two of learner status in the SGP. I don't think it will be right for our learners to take that serious responsibility. Most especially when it comes to appointment of personnel. Then the other thing that is also critical here is when SGP's will be allowed eh, to reallocate budget that was voted by parents. That will not be okay with me. And that will give a serious pressure to the officials of the department who are supposed to take care of management of funds and the governance of schools. Eh, lastly Chair, I must talk to the issue of recommendation of personnel by SGP's. If you can go to eh, a number of cases disputed in our department pertaining to appointments. Most cases come from inadequate support or inefficiency of SGP's in the area of appointment. The area of appointment of educators in the department must be returned to eh, Department of Education. We cannot take this education to whoever. The education depends, the, the, it is a responsibility of us as the department and the people of the country. Thank you very much, Chairperson. I support the bill.
Thank you. Another important thing we wanted to hear. Next.
Thank you very much Chair. My name is Seposhiyani. Unfortunately Chair, I would be more comfortable speaking Sutu. But I've just got it right that there is no body, there is no interpreter. So allow me to speak Sutu. I'm still with you Chair. Allow me to speak Sutu.
Eh, Honorable Member on the floor, can we not drown the speaker? It will be self-defeating. Over to you Baba.
Eh, xagri medisi de, mudla stulu. Keregi, sbuleto, kubitraga, Seposhiyani, komratier. Eh, I'm getting worried, very worried about the contents of this bill. Because Billy Ena, high-wig as chawa. It is just a bill which has been defined. It reminds me of something. When you talk about HOD of the department, it reminds of one HOD of Department of Health for S D many case. So now, the Baatao Beijing HOD, etahwana kontrol all the departments of education in, in South Africa. Whereby he can do whatever he likes. Abat lebatwa abo, abizetichaladi gaddang, asentwirazan, gildali, any department in our presence. That is unfair. Secondly, how now moto, there is no better person as well wanahi than a parent. And then now you want to remove Batwana Berengiri SGP's. Elimbo wana they act there as our securities. They know what is happening there, but what is the motive behind that? Because we cannot just do something, eh, tentative, sensitive like this. What's the motive behind? So definitely there is motive behind that. So, sir, don't ask me whether I support the bill or not, because my statements have shown it out. Kialabo.
Baba, do you support or not? Okay. Next. Thank you very much.
Malbulu ele Chairperson. I support the bill. Kukua indjo ndifuna agendisi tinge pa kulebi. Longtime be, ojoala escoline, au funegi tota. Si, kagwesi traxi kungoku. Okusbiini, we need health and safety escoline. Konsofaka ojoala, itilondo, akola ulolosa wenzeka, akotwango lusokubeka apa. Siya glomtimebe, utibene language. Siya ifuna ifaleka lekep inbetween impulas kaluchaaka, kunye, nabantu base parliament. Apo bafundi sabantu arababo, kui moti schools. Bati, kabe tetan woku, magutwene, magus, tijwai language ya ke umtu ana ku public school. Itilondo, kona woku. Chewanchi tete stosa, chekuso otoliku. Bati kautetisngisa, otoliku apeli. Itilondo, still is a corner lekep inbetween impulas kaluchaaka kunye nongo. Maipeleke londo, lendwe language. Maikomegekwa indoni le, ilidha, ilanguish. Auso solva uex, genkesinto. Si pini siya kule issue great R. Yasliwasisa Chairperson, ndoba kwa kutuwa before we escoline, kutuwa kalut. Yasliwasisa, kagungoku farba obuya kwaas mtaana utet, kutama kaya escoline. Konokus, lina pelipla esha teska funyanwe, sesi traxi, esesi staklakulis. Funaka sijonge nde, issue SGP's. Kweplesha sinagalongo, abandwana basala bina twelve years. Which is age of twenty years, usobe, selomta no funda. Usomendi SGP London. Itilondo masijonge nrenalayo it. And dasijonge SGP'sijonge umtu, also assista to institution, eso kwaasi, ukubela pambili, malehse, mchaleka pambili.
Eh Baba. Baba. Can you come clean? Do you support the bill or not?
I support it.
Thank you. Interpretation.
I, I support the bill. There is something in the bill, not in agreement. Eh, it is the question of liquor being used at schools. We have a problem with this. And we also have a third problem, is the problem of drugs. And there is also the language issues that needs to be addressed. And I refer to the parliamentarian children who are at public schools, that cannot be referred to the normal situation of other, of our children. There is a language problem. What is the need of languages? The great R problem should also be considered. We should enable the child to speak fluently. And there is the SGP issue that must also be considered. This is also of a greater assistance to the children and one should look at it. That is all. I thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Eh, I go Chair. Must appreciate eh, ukufuwa kweni welpondo. Lasen istenkep nisuke parliament. Sine ndo eti, oganyen si koke lai zati, sa usonde la uvoto. So mandisabantu in. Say notice alondo. But difuna uko utikal, le bill, dia isapota. Diisapota ndo eti, oganyen dieti, magukujue, magukane kope esolo yapale, lungu act number two oh three, paglapile di teda ngelakal drugs. Di buwe dieti, di tikuwa Chair, di repartise. Because some of the issues are the challenges that escoline. Di partisa le ndoke Chair, ede kala ndi, uba parliament. Ufiga, kui komidi ako, auguste ni komidi sa ako, ufiga ube uya iparamisa. Lendo ye L T S M escoline, maige buwe le apakuti escoline, we SGP's. Because abandwana, ufumanza ndoba kupela uniaka, ingwati zingaye escoline. Di teda ngwa, abukozi ingwati uwa escoline, edi suwa kuso. So, dia ikayala le ndoke, maige buwe la feko principal, le malehse, ye L T S M. Di buwe dieti, di raise a issue caroral allowance for itishaala. Dia ikayala male, java ni tati le, ney parliament. Kaga kupide naayo, oti maipide, ibuwe ndo otishaala, because otishaala ikonishin, abatishaala kuso, ezlalini. Azamkelekaanga, because basebenzisa imali zabo for the traveling. Nibedinalisa le tulupiin. Di buwe dieti, kulende escola transport. Dia ikayala maige buwe la kuejkuweshin, ikubuwe pawa transport, because abandwana, baama ge nyau, kungoku. Whereas, ubek suta kule nde, kuprocholi nde, eh, transport. Di buwe ndu patisa, eh, ndo, di teda ngwa, chenga woku. Abandwana, betu, bafunde la uzilzotaga. Akozikolo, anezakezikolo. Bati kulepili, no ani tete le, ndo, yoku, adenayo ndo eti. Etini imewe okalezi, sa kuele podras istenkep. Ukubakube kwa kewa, esikolo. Abandwana bapume kuzikozotaga. Di buwe dieti Chair, kulendwe re- Longo, yes, inoba basebanduana basi drop out, or else abazali. Abanayo, imali ukpatila abanduan, oga yini transport is calling. Lu tetayo, Mr Machali, from Nas Gpe, Port St. John's. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, and thank you very much. Is there need for interpretation? There was a mixture of languages. Okay, if you feel there is somewhere you want to interpret, do it. I'm Etua Messi. Was there too much of mixture of languages? But let's also take a time into consideration, because I want to come and wrap up at the end. Do it briefly.
Thanks, Chair. We appreciate that the parliament came to see the people of the Eastern Cape, but we're also suspicious because we can see that it's approaching voting time. So we suspect that you came here because of that. We also support the bill, but if you can just relook at Clause 203, the one that is addressing drugs. Also, I have some advice for you to take back to your committee in parliament. The first one is with regards to the L T S M. That must revert back to the SGP because there are problems with books even currently. Also, the rural allowance to be reinstated because the teachers are currently using their own funds to travel. Also, the issue of scholar transport needs to be relooked at because the children walk long distances. Also, the children in mad schools, that is also not addressed by your bill. Also, the question of realignment. Some children need to walk sometimes fifteen kilometers and this create dropouts because parents have no money to fund these children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ma. Next. I'm going to plead so that people should hear what you say even during interpretation. Let's get closer a bit to the mic. Barangi.
Eh, Nandi Mangani Sile, from Port St. John's. And SGP. Eh, okaala, mandi bulia fmanelthuba, di me apa, pamkuwepalamende. Eh, e bill, they amkeela, kapani kulisolo chage, ni kailo umtua, ngena swipinda, lochoala. Eh, indweni kailuwi risa apa, ndoguka, iszolo, more special, abagwu, second thirteen, eh, Port St. John's. Sneszolo apa, ezazakwe, go government, we home, we home, we home lens. More special, eh, eh, Transsky. Sneszolo sa cut box, ipayana, umtano, ngena, ule bloko puma ngapa, yuwe mbo. Ukhulumente, asasukuti, lili pitwana olusa ngapambili. Kuba, ubanga ba uyangu, kute ngawi, twengase, kweko ni delegation. Eh, kuchwayo, eh, parliament, kaguchwango wekweziscolu, kuba, zisese mkaanga, twen, oba, zisiscolu na, engosi.
Thank you, interpreter. Only the points where vernacular was used.
I come from Port St. John's firstly. I thank you, I accept the bill. Eh, at schools, I want to stress the problem that you are having concerning liquor. And at Port St. John's, we also have these problems. The government must please assist us in building the schools.
Thank you. Next.
Tiunati Kamalam, disuka, kwa ECD. Di ngu ECD, eh, gui, 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 gui district, ya se O R Tam. Di ngu communication, gui district ya se O R Tam. Di yavumela nanee bill, they support. Gotandiyakela, si involve we, apa kule, 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 kule amendment bill, singu ECD. U ECD, u kala, gui, gui, H two, wa, sumtana kala kwasu tetan. Si adilishana naaye, uyate tan si amtecha, senzayonkito, and abanduana benu, they are so clever. Baya kwasu, u participata, kanga ngogo, classin. Si aykayala uoyo. U ECD, uyafandwa, we preschool, se sitile, ufumanza, ufanda, we administration, nutrition, nagustimulation. But akondi tetan gemali for i practitioner, eh, adilishana na abanduan. Unikuwa is stipend of two point one. Goga understanding, yam, eh, South Africa, oktwet list, umtu, oh, 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 of money stipend. Magafumanne, eh, three point five. But u practitioner yen, odilishana umtuan. Unikuwa only two point one. Si aykayala betunana, si considerishu, di ayvega, give, aga, great R, but and yiva, eh, tetan, o ECD.
Your time is up. Eh, 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 Baba, before you go, can you come clear? Do you support this bill, Hotanya?
I said that, I support the bill.
Thank you. Very important input. Next.
I am Unati from the ECD in the district of O R Tambo. I support the bill. I ask that we be involved in the ECD issues. And we are having problems in the ECD with children of two years old. They are not speaking. And we ask for funds for the ECD. Certain schools are not being supported. The practitioners do not get funds. And at certain places, they get a stipend of three point five, but ECDs are supported lesser.
Thank you. Next. Mthata by night. Next. Gosi, Chairperson. Guzandi Sile, Kagala. Di guno Palawe Sa Tu, by Port St. John's. Eh, Chairperson, Lambi, let us start by saying, we fully support all of us. We fully support this bill. Na sigesi, do iskale album Lambi, sikesi, asitou, inga mehlo, onokhajas. One, si ayheula le, ndole alcohol. Two, Mlambi, Chairperson, Lendo in a capacitation, ye SGP's. Not for compliance. I mean a capacitation SGP. Thirdly, Lambi, Lendo yeszolo, Chairperson. Yeah, procurement. City, everything, eh, eh, final album champions, we is calling. Let the procurement be decentralized, Chairman. Everything, eh, eh, final album champions, we is calling. Let the procurement be decentralized, Chairman. Ungapindu boze, umyumt. We fully support this bill. Fela, he has got the luxury of even saying things which may not be palatable. I did not hear him as good, eh, interpreter.
My name is Ansilia Kala from Port St. John's. I'm the secretary of Sa Tu. We fully support the bill, Chairperson. But we have the following things that we would like you to consider carefully. First of all, we don't agree with the issue of alcohol in schools. Secondly, the capacitation of SGP not for compliance. Thirdly, the procurement in schools must be decentralized. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Eh, greetings to you, Chairperson. Eh, first of all, I'm, I'm Domozuko Nomandel, Deputy Chairperson, Sa Tu, Melanie Brent. I fully support the bill. Eh, we have some things that you should look at in the bill also. The first thing, the ratio. The, the schools that we are working at has got large numbers. In a case whereby a, a, a member is dead or go for retirement, that teacher is not being replaced. Therefore, that puts us into a big pressure whereby we have to teach large, eh, eh, large numbers. Secondly, there is an issue of the SGP that needs to be trained. Also, we, we also need a clarity on the Clause forty-seven, whereby there is an issue of the secondment of educators to other departments. And also, we need eh, the skills. Our learners tend to drop into schools in eh, 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 earlier ages. So we need those learners to get skills at an earlier stage so that when they drop out, they have something to do instead of staying in those shops eh, doing drugs there. Another thing, we also need that agriculture to be, to come back in our schools at, at eh, eh, earlier ages because we, we, we also look at the poverty, the rate of poverty. I think if we can eh, let tho- those agricultural subjects come back, our, our, our country can be a better country in the, in the next years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Baba. Next.
Eh, greetings to the Chairperson of the House and the House at large. Eh, I am Lou Vuyo Ndagana, the Deputy Director of Sa Tu in JGR, that is Kamalane Kwaye Region in the Eastern Cape Province. And also a member of ANC in good standing. Eh, I fully support the bill. The bill is progressive and it seeks to advance the agenda of transforming education in our country. But Chair and the House, I'm a two with this issue that raised to drugs and selling of liquor in our schools. I think all those people who are behind me will be in support of the bill, hundred percent, all of them. Amantla.
I'm not sure whether in parliament I must respond and say, ah, wait, but in any case, the rest of you, you have got all the luxury to respond. Eh, let me give this announcement. I see my cue and then eh, I'm not so sure what will be the next decision and whether we can go the route of saying five-five. Eh, eh, just in this way, carry. But those who feel burning, can you start approaching the forms for the written submissions? Next.
Eh, mandibula slalo. Lo uteta yo ngumnike lo kwa i, osuka paya eh Alfred Inzo district. Eh, ndeteta ken, ndinga yamke li, ona yipili le. Ndineziza, tukezine, se esesitazwe, gena zisiteti, ebesuka. And kwasu, ukusuka kwam, ndinikeze, i authority, umtana mama kaya, ayo balinwila. Dingage, ndikwazu, utendivumela, ukhulumente, ata telamanla, apakwesa SGP's. Akondweni, nse, ndisoiteta, and yamke li, ndingulomnike lo, utolo, kwa ba temasi yamke.
Did I hear?
Nikelo kwa i, Alfred Inzo, I do not accept the bill. I have a problem with the drunkenness or liquor use. I cannot accept the bill. I'm very sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Eh, thank you very much, Chairperson. I am Sizwe Mkuñana, the Chairperson of Sa Tu in Kamalandi Le Kwaye Region, the biggest region in the country. We are very much grateful for the opportunity eh, you have afforded us. I fully support the bill. We cannot throw away the baby with bathwater. Chairperson, I'm excited that the following clauses have been included in the bill. The admission of learners. Chairperson, our family structures have since been tempered with. You know that the economic structure of our country favors those who are well-to-do. Now, it provides for the formation of committees that are fully armed to be able to find documents for those learners who do not have documents. We like that. Number two, homeschooling. Where have you heard schooling not regulated in South Africa? This bill is beautiful. It seeks to regulate homeschooling, which is a precursor for those unscrupulous people who want to form education institutions eh, and then hand over learners who are not well-developed to the basic education department. We fully support the bill. Then, on the issue of, of, of eh, financial statements, Chairperson, we fully support this bill because it seeks to make equal everybody. I guess this clause was included because we know the principals of former Model C schools get bonuses that are said to be coming from SGP's at the end of each year. Those bonuses are said to be coming from donations that are made to those schools. If donors fund Model C schools, they should also fund our rural schools so that SGP's can also give bonuses to principals in our schools. Chairperson, this issue of selling alcohol, I think we have misunderstood it. If we were to put all the members of the portfolio committee here in front of me, I could point those who have included this clause here. Chairperson, we know which schools sell alcohol in their activities. It's former Model C schools. Now they want us to approve that. We don't.
Unfortunately. We are not. Unfortunately, Sitalo, your time has up. Thank you very much for the input. Next.
Eh, eh, engosi, mchaleka pambi. Mna, ndisa, desauteta as an unemployed educator. Okaala, apa, eh, parliament, paramunicipals, eti, but at the end of the day, abat ingwa, abandu, aba unemployed. Si sitishala, si unemployed. Si akoka, si unemployed. Iszolo, esu otishala, aba ba shela papa mkuwatu. Baya yazu, weklo, twinga piece kwabo. Kotwa, na votishala batwela papa. Kumane, sittwa, kwele, ma pepe, nukutwa, ayotishala beko, kushotwa, ba otishala ba twelve thousand. Na votishala bakon, nanti, ngoska, lo, yep, bill, ndundun. But why kuna kashawo tishala? Why you education, solo kute tange, eh, chuba, eh, chakumtala? Why iszolo, teaches eh, ee es? Di buza, apa, we principals, kengwa, apenlin? Itishala es, teaches ee es. Si sa ipika, lo, ndaino. Why? It nse, ndo, eh, nse, guy. Why you department, ndinga kopi pulitin? Isolo kusiti tata peace, mpa, koku principal, ama, yos, tate, umtua, mtanda, yu. Esenai, ayomfage posti. Why you posti, zilinda, abanduan, abasai scolding, kota scolding, itishala, eh, selpans? So, ongesinto, sintu esko, yu, apes esbona. And then, nanti, bill, abanduana, bani, kutoala, whatever, whatever. But what about those teachers, aba sheli pans? Kuliwaki homeschooling, ba, ma ingenziu. Eh, we, ba funny, abandu, bulia, the homeschool, eh, ndose, homeschooling because abasabens, o government, daga, for this post, former mama sabens. So please, yonke, lo, yalo, bill, party, tlingani, gaba, nduaba unemployed. Is, abasitishala, aba qualified. Na banda, ba teacher out of their specialization. For instance, mna, the specialization, we creative arts. But kenseki, abanyo tishala apa, eh, ni principal, apa, kapagat. Si fagin, cheku, tu, ama, ba tishala, ndilul, ilul, abu music. Engasag, umtua, wenzescolu, because o government, daga, full, agaspost, engosi.
Thank you. Interpretation.
Thanks, Chepessin. I stand here speaking as an unemployed educator. Parliament brings bills to us but doesn't consider us as unemployed educators. Teachers are struggling with ratios at schools. But we are sitting as unemployed educators. Why are teachers allowing ee es to teach? Why are the posts waiting for students to qualify when there is so many unemployed um educators out there? The government doesn't allow doesn't open posts but wants to regulate homeschoolings. That is being um initiated by unemployed educators. And they also don't consider teachers who have areas of special specialization.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon to everybody. I am Vatiswa Msenzé. Backup negotiator from GGR region. I am a Sato member in good standing. First of all. Um. I fully support the bill hundred percent. Number one, let me say eh, Chepessin. As Sato would like to say. Security and safety must be a priority and strengthen in our schools. Number two and the last one. We as Sato would love to see our job descriptions revisited. Because now we see ourselves overlapping being the nurses in our schools. I thank you.
Thank you and thank you very much. Next.
Good Chepessin, let me greet everyone. Eh, Chepessin, I'm comrade eh Unolu Babalo Dipa. From Kamalandile Kwaerigi. Eh, Chepessin, I would like this eh first of all, I support the bill. But I would like eh the following items to be considered. One, the infrastructure challenges in our schools. The merging and closure of small and unviable schools. Whereas there is no transport provided for those learners. Eh, the issue of post-provisioning eh for our schools. Eh, in our rural schools, we do have schools who are one teacher schools.